Commission meeting, it's Wednesday, May 25th, 2022. May we have a roll call, please?
Sharon Callahan.
Here.
Lou Conyers absent. Charlie Obermeyer.
Here.
Deborah Pener.
Here.
And Barb Jaeger.
Here.
If you don't mind, I would like to take a moment to have a moment of silence, please, in memory of all those that were lost in Texas yesterday. Thank you. The, all persons are reminded that this session is being recorded on tape as required by law for the preservation of records and are asked that when providing comment to give their name and address, all persons in attendance are requested to print their name, address, and affiliation on the sign-in sheet that's at the front door. The first on the agenda is the Minister's approval for the April 27th, 2022 regular commission meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
No.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Is there any administrator update?
Just to kind of let you know where our projects are, the Ridge Engineering site plans in the legal process, so you know, all the site plans have been approved, but the Mylar's need to be signed. And the county public works agreement is in the approval process. The town public works agreement's been signed by Ridge. We'll sign it when we receive our letter of credit. So that process is almost finished. And Ridge applied for their permit for the retaining wall and their grading-only permit. So the grading-only permit is separate than the full site plan. The North Carroll High School property grading-only project is in county review. And then the fire department's grading-only permit is also in county review. And the public works agreement for the North Carroll Business Park is under county review. So that's where everything is right now.
Okay. Any comments? Questions? Okay, then we can move on.
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, approval of signage, Rocco's Market in Deli, 1301 North Main Street.
Steve Rogers, LMSC, 1300 North Main Street.
Wow. Looks really good.
Do we have any questions or comments about the signage?
So the only thing you're putting on those windows is those things?
Yeah, it's going to be some vinyl lettering, similar to what's theirs, the same size and everything.
Just at the top here, like?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you doing this sign on the side? Do you change your mind?
Well, there's a funny story. Currently, our sidewalk is sinking.
Oh.
And the front of the facade of the building's falling off. So I've been working with Tammy and State Highways and CJ Miller. Both of those bump outs that have been here historically since 1950s.
Yes.
Are falling off the building.
Cheese.
So they're separating. So our sidewalk is currently sinking, which is making that pole tip towards Main Street. So if, if the pole stays and we find a way for the, you know, repairs to be made and it stays, we may put something up there. If we have to get repairs done, they need to remove those two walls, we probably won't put a pole back up.
Well, did you want to get the sign approved?
I talked to Jim about that, and he didn't know which way we should do it. I mean, if you want to include it today as an option, that would be a three-foot by, I think, 18-inch approximately.
What is it again?
I believe it's three feet wide by 18 inches tall. We'd call it three by two.
Oh, but actually, does it hang over the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't, it wouldn't hit anybody, though.
No, it's so high up.
Yeah.
But we don't know if that pole's staying, so that's why we didn't include it in the bid.
Tammy, do you want to include it potentially for the future, or?
Well, we could if we want to. The thing is, if you decide to do it later and we haven't approved it, you have to come back.
Yes, we might. If we can cover it tonight, that'd be great, just to have it on there.
You can do that.
As much as we'd like to see you, we might as well.
And I am hungry, but, you know. That's another story.
And that will be, they call it high HDU, high-density urethane. So it'll be like a wood sandblasted type.
Similar to the ones that's on the building?
Uh, no, those are removed. Similar to.
No, the ones you want to put on the building.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what those are made out of. That's high-density urethane, so it's a composite wood look that would be going up there to those signs that are up there in the mock-up.
Is that like the Gishvar lessons sign, maybe, if you've seen?
They don't know what they made it out of.
Okay.
So it looks like wood, it looks sandblasted, it's actually a urethane, so it's not going to rot or warp or anything.
I think that's, they have the same.
It looks great.
It really does.
I love the gray and the white.
Yeah, trying to dress it up a little bit. So we played with a whole bunch of different things with mock-ups, and we looked at painting it, we looked at a whole bunch of stuff, but, yeah, woodland signs in Westminster's neighborhood, of course.
Very good. Any questions, anyone? Any comments?
There's no, we don't have to worry about anything with height on this sign, right? The one that we're adding to it?
No. There's a limitation on the height of the actual sign.
Okay.
But not how, I mean.
How high the sign goes.
I know we've talked about that with other ones, like the guitar guy. Do you know how high that is? Off the top of your head?
Twelve feet, maybe?
Probably twelve feet, yes. So that's probably 10 feet.
Yeah, that's pretty high, I mean.
From the front curb to here, that's at least eight feet.
Okay.
Then you've got four feet of freeboard all the way up to here, so that's 12 feet.
That's 15, yeah.
I mean, the limitation of height of a sign is 15.
Okay.
But it's the full sign.
And then the window signage falls within the code of the 25.
Yes, and you would know that.
I hope you can keep your walls for.
It'd be nice if you could keep that.
I, it's going to be a mystery. I mean, I, here, I'll show you guys.
I know, that's not what we're here for.
Yeah, it's very interesting. So here is a picture that Google Maps took back in 2013, right before the beginning of the project. You see where it's attached to the building?
Uh huh.
No gap separation. And then, if we look at Google Maps while they're tearing the sidewalks out, you can still see them attached. Okay?
Right.
I'll show you what they look like now.
Come back again with that, you zip.
That was 2013, so you see, not 2013, that's 2020. Okay, see, they're still attached? Watch this.
You've done your research.
It's amazing.
Well, when you got to deal with the state and no one wants to fix their stuff, that's what we're dealing with right now.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, that's significant.
Yeah, so.
Wow.
And then we've got, walking into the front door, we got a large crack that's coming in where the pad is actually cracking in half. So.
Wow.
We also got flooding issues from the little wall that they put up in that parking lot that's next door to our building, which we don't own. And that's preventing water from going into stormwater management, it's forcing it back into my building, so. Yeah, that's another thing Tammy's helped me with. So we've had a lot of issues with some state highways work, but we'll make the building better, surely.
Eventually, right? It takes time.
Well, I mean, you've already made it look incredible with the painting and all the other stuff, too.
And just so you guys know, that parking lot's not ours.
I know that, yeah.
So any improvements, I can't do anything to that parking lot, because we don't own it.
Right.
Oh, you don't?
No, that's owned by Lucieferk.
That was always an issue, over the years, that it wasn't owned by that building. Yeah. Okay. Any other comments?
Can you at least tell me, it looks beautiful, sure.
It does look beautiful. I love it, yes, I do, yes.
I love the font of the rock.
Yeah, we wanted it to look like a little retro, older-looking, and yet.
Well, and it's easy to read, too. It's not busy.
And lots of gluten-free options in your deli. Just for the record, I don't have a vote, makes no difference.
Okay, then.
You want us to make that contingency?
Yes, please. An Italian cold cut would be really good, with everything on it. I'm so sorry, I couldn't resist that.
Okay, so we need to make him come back for the other sign, but bring food.
We're gonna, I think, oh, that's a good idea, and then he could bring the cold cut. Okay, I think we should get serious. And, okay, so we, may we have a motion, please, to approve the signage for 1301 North Main Street? And.
Including this.
Including the sign on the side of the building, if in fact, they're able to put that sign or install that sign.
Yeah, we hope it can stay, because it's been there since 1940, because Sam's Bar and Grill hung there in 1953, so.
So we need a motion, please, for an approval of the signage for 1301 North Main Street in the front of the building, and in addition, contingent on the ability to use the sign, an approval for the sign on the side street as well. May I have a motion, please?
Make the motion to approve the sign on the front of the building of 1301 North Main Street, and also a contingent approval for the sign on the side, if you're able to make that happen. Oh, correct, for all three signs.
Right.
And the windows.
Yep, and the windows, yeah.
And, I mean, I have a second, please.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, please, approval of exterior structure changes, 1506 North Main Street. Good evening.
This is Scarlett Havlon, I'm Stephanie Havlon, and we're at 1506 North Main Street, as he said. And we were hoping to change the exterior of the house, and we feel an interesting texture is feeling paint, getting away off of the brick exterior. And we would like to put up gray siding, vinyl siding, and make the F-channel, J-channel inside and outside corners and soften white with black shutters. And then we wanted to paint the porch so that the upper part of the columns and the panels on the porch would be white, and the rail and lower portion of the columns would be black.
That's a lot of work.
Are you going to be doing all the work yourself?
She is, she knows.
Yeah.
Yes, I thought so.
So instead of the brick that's there now, right?
It's going to be.
On the front, it's going to be the gray siding?
Yes.
And black shutters.
What do we do with the little architectural feature up at that, the peak window?
Actually, the new window we're in, so it's going to remain the architectural details I've worked on, and we'll probably go ahead and paint the actual detail that is there that is done in brick, so it stands out against the vinyl siding.
Very nice.
I bet you could save that, that's unique.
It is.
How old is this house, do you think?
I'm not sure, I can't remember off the top of my head, although it was considered as a 1900s house. So it is an older.
I bet it's older than that. A lot of times in public records, it'll say 1900 in it, it's because that's as far back as they could go, nobody really knows. Okay. Any questions, ladies?
Would you mind if you came, would you mind showing us all?
Thank you.
You did such a great job, we want to see all your hard work.
Very nice.
That looks really nice. I love your presentation.
You did very well. Thank you.
I have a question, just because I didn't want to, like, come up closer to the house. What is, like, the railings made of? That's what I thought, it looked like concrete, but I'm.
Just a curiosity question, I know nothing about siding. Is it difficult to put siding on brick?
Um, my husband is the contractor for the project, he is the one who knew the work of the DDP, and wants to know how difficult it is. From what I understand, it's foreign strips that you put up first, and then you put the siding against the foreign strips, is what he did. So that's how I understand it, basically.
I'm sure he wouldn't take it on if he thought he couldn't do it.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
It was really, really hard.
And the back, the exterior on the back side of the house is already sided, it's aluminum siding, there's fading, so we wanted to replace that all with the gray and vinyl siding, so it all matches.
Sort of look nice altogether, yeah. Well, they have, it's going to look right. Big improvement. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, then if not, may I have a motion, please, to approve the changes to the front of the house, actually, the whole house, 1506 North Main Street, Hampstead. This would be to scrape and paint the porch black and white, put siding on the house in gray and black shutters, and match the siding on the back of the house to match the front. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the siding on the entire house, 1506 North Main Street, Hampstead, Maryland, 21074, and painting the columns black.
And shutters.
And shutters.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Then so approved. Thank you. Good luck.
Can't wait to see the finished product.
Yes. Thank you again. Okay. Next, certification that the 2022 spring amendment to the 2019 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan, as it pertains to the town of Hampstead, is consistent with the 2010 Community Comprehensive Plan.
Is that microphone on? Price.
Good evening, Price Wagner Carroll, Price Wagner Carroll County Department of Planning. I am here to ask for the planning commission to certify this amendment for the town of Hampstead as consistent with their current comp plan. This came before us from the town to put certain portions of the Industrial Development Authority, which I believe is the North Carroll Business Park.
Yes.
Which is in future, Brindo's in the priority, and then take out the portion of the Trent Mills Farm, which is in priority, put that in future, to make everything more consistent with.
Because right now, if you turn to, I think it's like the second map, the third, where it talks about Trent Mill Road, that property's personally, that's being farmed. It does not, I think it has future water allocation, or no, no planned water allocation, one or the other.
On the east side, I mean, the south side?
The side we're removing the.
That's in right now, that's currently what's considered priority, so we're just going to flip it.
No, but I mean, water. I was talking, this is sewer, we're talking about sewer.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it doesn't have water allocation. So we have a parcel that's being farmed with, with no plans of development that has sewer allocation, but no water allocation, which you know, if you're developing, you need both, if you're developing in town. So what I would like to do, in the northern, or what we requested of Price, is the northern part of the North Carroll Business Park, which is north of Ridge and Fukes, north of where they're putting in the stormwater facility and the grading only, they had water allocation in priority, but no sewer allocation. So we want to put it together where the northern part of the business park will now be marketable, because it'll have water allocation and sewer allocation. And that was the request we asked for Price, so he could do all his calculations and then present it to the Maryland Department of Environment for approval.
As you'll see in the staff analysis, sort of did the calculations of what, and for whatever reason, the IDA parcels, two print parcels, the northern parcel, as Tammy said, was in future, the lower parcel, we'll see, though, we said, pumping station, that was split with priority and future, so that's one of those weird, don't know why it's that way, so. But with the Trent Mills Farm property, with that allocation, bringing that over, that was able to be enough to cover almost all of the northern portion, except for, if I remember, was it 2,400 gallons, 1,500 gallons? So it was able to cover the majority of it, and then we already have, since the northern portion and other parts were already in the plan, but in the future, we just moved that over into the priority aspect. So now everything in the IDA is marketable, which for the town is better. That's a higher priority. However, you know, taking it out, taking the Trent Mills Farm out of the water and sewer altogether, at this point in time, wouldn't be the, you know, not the best thing to do, because if, you know, should everything, anything ever happen, they're in there, taking them out and them trying to get back in, it would be a lot harder.
So basically, just.
We just, yeah.
Switched future and priority, so now the northern, the northern part of the North Carroll Business Park has priority water, priority sewer, and Carroll County Economic Development has already expressed interest in marketing the northern end.
And I have, I did hear back from MDE, just on their basic comments, they didn't have anything major at all. So the plan is, after tonight, we are, I will go in front of our planning commission on the 21st, have them certify the overall spring amendment. Union Bridge had one, an amendment also, and we will brief our county commission, 23rd, actually, and then we'll go in front of them for the public hearing after the Fourth of July, and then the record will be held open for 10 days. And then, so probably the very end of July, we'll send this off to MDE, and then hopefully have the responses back, since they've already reviewed it and didn't have any major comments. I would say by, I'll think, August, probably the absolute latest end of August. When they don't, when they come back and they have no comments, you know, they, and I think, you know, doing the, and also, I didn't put it in part of this stat report, but I made a map that sort of spelled out to them, here's what the thought process is of while we're doing it. So made it a little bit easier, so that I'm trying to decipher, I mean, for us to get this, so.
Right.
That's what we're here for, to get the consistency to the current 2010 master plan. We'll go from there.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? For you, Price? Very good.
The other thing you need to update us on? Do we have to vote, you're not looking for, are you looking for approval, or just to inform us?
I mean, well, this is just the, you have to sign a letter of consistency, so I'll send it over to you. But if you hadn't, so you can, you know.
It doesn't require a vote, Tammy, I didn't think.
No. Okay.
So just get that signed off by Ms. Callahan, and we'll be ready to go.
Okay. Thank you.
I think now we're moving into just the basic town.
Department of Planning update.
Yes, the thing. So depending how you want to do it, this is my last, this is my last meeting. We have a new liaison, as you probably know and see, Andrew Gray, we stole him from Westminster. So, and I'm taking over Westminster, so this will be my last meeting. He has jumped in feet-first, he's definitely been, I think he had that with you and Jim yesterday, didn't he?
Right, right.
And he's been working with Kathleen, who's doing the maps and all that for the comprehensive plan update, and then he's also been talking with Tiffany, who was doing the annual report. So if there's any information that you have that you want to bring forward, I'll make a transition over, and I'll sit down, you can go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Andrew Gray, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's nice to be here, as, and thank you, Price. Price has done a wonderful job with, and everybody else in the Department of Planning over at the county to get me up to speed. Just a little bit of background, I've been a resident here in the northern part of Carroll County, right outside the Hampstead Town Limits, for the last 25 years, having graduated from North Carroll High School. I also am a graduate of Towson University with my master's degree in planning. For the past seven years, I have been a comprehensive planner for the city of Westminster. Know a lot of the things Tammy's gone through with water allocations, building permits, site development plans, many different things that come through in what would be Planning Department. And also, I was at Westminster, I was lead staff to the City Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic District Commission, and Tree Commissions, and we started the Site and Ordinance Review Committee. So it's wonderful to be here, being not only your liaison, but the town of Manchester as well, and if you all have any questions, please let me know. I know Tammy and Jim know where to get me. But thank you.
I already have.
And thank you, Price.
So what do we need now for the annual report?
I can say what, I don't know if Jim filled you in. We, they have our information, and we chose the option to see what it would look like in the report. They haven't had time to insert it in the report, so they took screenshots of what's going to be in the report, and we asked them to put it in as it will appear when it's approved. So, and not to mention, I'm old and I can't read that, but.
Basically, gave you screenshots of what you gave them.
Right. But we want to see it in the report, which, so she said they haven't had time to finish it, they're going to bring it next month for our approval. And as soon as they give it to us, we'll forward it to you to review before the meeting.
Yeah, so next month, I will be coming with the Hampstead portion, so I'll be presenting that next month to you all.
And of course, Jim and I will review it before it's presented to you, but we submitted the information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome. And Price, I want to thank you, been a pleasure to work with you.
I appreciate it, it's been, it's been a good time.
Yes, it has been. Okay, is there any other business? Any other comments? No public comment? Okay. Okay.
Well, thank you, Diana, I need a public comment.
Then, with no public comment and any further business, may I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So adjourned. Thank you.